Welcome. Welcome all. I'd like to call to order our special meeting of City Council for September 2nd, 2010. Let's start with a pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first, I'd notice on the agenda, we'd like to just see if there's any announcements from City Council here. Mr. Klein, anything you have?
Yeah, just, first of all, you know, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and watching at home. There are a lot of sports on tonight, so it's great that people are going to be paying attention to what's going on in the city. Only announcement I have is the Parks and Rec Foundation, as most of you know, is having a golf tournament on September 10th. If you want to sign up for it, it's at Poplar. The website to go to is www dot P R F for Parks and Rec Foundation, SanCarlos dot org. And the website, or the tournament's September 10th, and it benefits the Parks and Rec Foundation of San Carlos.
Great. Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, had a tremendously scary incident yesterday. Most people here know that I used to work for the Discovery Channel for a number of years, and yesterday, there was a hostage situation at Discovery Channel headquarters with a gentleman who walked in with a bomb on his chest and waving a gun. There are nineteen hundred people that work in that building, and one of the things that happened during this point was all of a sudden, a lot of people wanted to find out, were our friends safe? The challenge that did occur was that the phone lines, you could not get a phone call in or out of that area. Phone lines were jammed, cell phones didn't work. What actually did work was SMS. And so, I'm putting this out as sort of a general thought for later discussion, but what did work was SMS.
Excuse me, I apologize, Mr. Ramad. I have no clue what you're talking about.
I'm talking about texting.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry, but I apologize.
No, and I appreciate that, but what did actually work was that there were a group of us that eventually were able to form something online and say, "Did you see Bob? Yes, I found Bob. He was at this particular corner." "Did he see Denise? Yes, Denise is there." And very quickly, online, we were able to assemble a list of who was out of the building, where they were, because people who were around there and had been evacuated couldn't actually get messages to their loved ones. As we start to look for disaster communications and things like that, I would encourage people to start to look for alternative communication methods, and I had a brief conversation with Robert Weil also about what we can do, because if our infrastructure goes down, there's going to be a lot of people who want to know that you're safe and figure out what to do. So, this was a, it was a scary reminder. The good news is that no one at Discovery Channel was hurt. Everybody got out okay.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Groggott, anything to report on announcements?
Nope.
Mr. Grisilli?
No, Mr. Mayor.
No, and I have nothing. Okay. Moving to item two, public comment. This is the section, if anybody wants to speak on any item not on this evening's agenda, would be welcome to do so. Anybody have any thoughts? TV cameras here. Anybody? No? Okay, let's move on. New business. We have three items under new business, actually, four items under new business. Let me just kind of give a brief summary of each of the four labeled A, B, C, and D. A is consideration of a resolution approving an agreement between the city of San Carlos and one of our labor groups, A F O, C I O Clerical Technical Unit. B is consideration of resolution, again, agreement between the city of San Carlos and the San Carlos Police Officers Association, a different labor group. And C is the third labor group between the city of San Carlos and the management and confidential group. So, we'll be doing those, the first three. And then, the last item, which is 3D, it's broken up into two parts. This deals with the contracting out of our police services to the sheriff's office. It's broken into executing a contract agreement. It will be the first part that we'll be voting on, and then executing a transfer agreement will be the second part of that. And then, we will be adjourning for closed session after our meeting with City Council on save the parks lawsuit. So, with that, let me turn it over to Mr. Mark Weiss, staff report. On 3A, you'll take it in that order?
And then Jeff will walk through each of the items on the agenda.
Okay. Overview of all of three?
An overview of what's on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
Where we've come from and where we think we're going.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. In December of 2009, on the heels of the failure of Measure U, the City Council meant to discuss the options. We knew that we were facing approximately a $3 million deficit citywide, nearly fifteen percent of our general fund budget. The, you know, during-
Mark, can you get closer to the mic? A little bit more?
During the past year, the city has cut services and programs, it's laid off employees, it's cut salaries and benefits, it's contracted for parks maintenance, and it's contracted for payroll services, and these cuts and reductions in services will save the city hundreds of thousands of dollars over the coming year. Yet, in that most of the city's expenditures are in the realm of public safety, the cuts and reductions that we've made elsewhere are not sufficient to cover and address the $3.5 million deficit that the city faces. One of the actions taken in December of 2009 was to authorize the review of regional public safety service options. In March, and again in June, the City Council considered reports on regional options, including specifically proposals for contract police services. City staff was ultimately authorized to meet and confer with affected labor groups and to negotiate a contractual agreement with the county sheriff. Tonight's agenda includes, as you've just outlined, proposed agreements with those labor groups, and service and transfer agreements with the county for the provision of police services beginning as early as October 31st of this year. Now, obviously, we've been talking about this for a long time. There are a number of contracts and agreements before the council this evening. A lot of people have worked and contributed many hours in bringing these agreements to you this evening. I think it's appropriate to recognize and show our appreciation to Sheriff Monks and the sheriff's office for the dedication of his personnel in putting a proposal together and working with us on this agreement, including under Sheriff Bolanos, who is in the audience this evening, and all of the support personnel within the county sheriff's office. Also, the county manager, David Bosch, county council, human resources, finance, and all of the county support staff have been involved in the preparation of the documents and working with us to bring these documents to you. City staff, including the city attorney, the special legal counsel we've been working with, Jeff Maltby, the administrative services director, and all of the administrative services department staff, H R, finance, again, have worked with us very closely in putting these documents together. Mr. Ed Rogner with Commonwealth International has been retained by the city. He's also in the audience this evening. He's working in Southern California on numerous contracts with L.A. County and has for decades of service. Police Chief Rothas and the command staff within the police department. If you can imagine the challenge that managing the police department has been over the last six months, nine months, with the uncertainty, with the nervous energy, I guess, that comes with proposals such as this, I might say that that nervous energy transcends not just the police department, but throughout City Hall, because you know better than most the options that we were considering should this proposal not be successful, affecting all of city staff. All of the affected staff, and I think most importantly, you know, the sergeants, the officers, the deputies, records personnel, administrative support staff within the police department and beyond, but our appreciation to the folks that have been working under the strain and stress of these last months, the uncertainties, and continuing to provide services to this community in a dignified and professional manner. I trust that that professionalism will continue forward as we move into the future, irrespective of whether or not these agreements are ultimately approved or not, but I wanted to share my appreciation to that staff and to the people that have worked to bring these documents together and who have carried forth in providing the services that we've come to be dependent upon. We appreciate those efforts. With that, I'd like to turn the podium over to Jeff Maltby, the administrative services director. He's worked most closely from the city staff's perspective in coordinating and bringing these documents before you, and then we, as staff and the consulting staff, will be available to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Jeff Maltby, administrative services director. If it pleases the council, I'd like to make just one presentation on items A through C as they share many commonalities, and then if you have any specific questions regarding the three individual reports that have been attached, we can address those then. The three proposed labor agreements before you are tentative agreements, which the city has reached on the council's behalf with the ASME, both the ASME Clerical Technical Unit, the ASME Midmanagement Unit, the San Carlos Police Officers Association, the Confidential Unit of San Carlos, and the San Carlos Management Unit. All these units contain employees that are working currently in the police department and would be affected by a contract with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. The items contained in the proposal address a number of issues raised by the council, by citizens, by employees of the police department, the county, our consultant, Ed Rogner. The document has had considerable input from many, many sources, and it focuses on several key areas. And the first area is that all the full-time employees that work for the city of San Carlos Police Department would be offered employment by the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. That's obviously something that the city itself can't guarantee. It needs a guarantee from the county as well, and we'll get to that later this evening, hence the order of items on the agenda tonight. But the guarantee of jobs, the concept of Y-rating for our miscellaneous employees, these are the non-sworn employees of the department, of which there are eight. Y-rating is a concept by which employees would be able to maintain their current salary even though they're moving into a position at the county where they would be making less money. For a period of three years, their salary would remain at the current level, allowing them time to make those adjustments personally, or seek promotional opportunities, whatnot with the county, or possibly find other employment if they're looking. There's an opportunity for our employees, as they go over to the county, to have some of their seniority that they've generated here in San Carlos apply as part of their employment with the county for such things as accruing vacation, utilizing federal and state statutory leaves, such as F M L A, to participate in promotional opportunities in the future in the county. Those items, the county will recognize San Carlos seniority as they move over, which is done by the council and the employees in an effort to try to smooth the transition of our employees into the sheriff's office, to make the transition more seamless, and to ensure that we maintain the same high-quality public safety that we have currently. There are provisions within the agreements that would allow employees to purchase up to 160 hours out of their own vacation bank here in San Carlos with the sheriff's office, up to 80 hours they can purchase of comp time at the sheriff's office. And the city, in recognition of the employee service and those employees that have not utilized a good deal of sick leave during their tenure with the city, the city has agreed to provisions by which they would transfer over 50% of an employee's sick leave for the Police Officers Association Management and Confidential, and 100% for the smaller unit, which contains a number of new employees in the city who don't actually have much sick leave on the books from the ASME units. Those are the major provisions of the contracts before you this evening. The P O A contract would serve as a final contract for the San Carlos Police Officers Association and would end all past and future liabilities of the city. The two ASME contracts, the management contract, the confidential contract, are being treated more as side letters to the existing units. Those units will continue on. They have employees in other departments and other areas of the city, so the units will continue into the future. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the staff reports.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Maltby. Any questions from council?
I have none.
Let me, for public comment, maybe I could break it into two areas. If anybody has any public comment on A, B, or C, any of the employment contracts Mr. Maltby talked about, would be welcome to speak now, and then I will open again public comment when we get to 3D, which is the actual contract itself. So, first of all, anybody would like to speak on 3A, B, or C? Please, come on up. Sure, just give it to Ms. Bolan and-
And again, if you could limit your comments to about two minutes. You're great. You're great. Thank you.
Good evening. Heidi Morrison, San Carlos Police Department, police service technician. Mayor Royce and members of the City Council, I stand before you on behalf of the members of ASME Local 8291 last time. Over the last six months, I've made several trips to this podium, asking you to listen to our impassioned pleas for assistance and consideration through this difficult process. Tonight, I am accompanied by some of the non-sworn members represented by ASME. Although it has always been our hope to serve our careers as city of San Carlos employees, we understand the difficult situation the city has faced. We would like to take this opportunity to thank you for listening to our requests and making this transition as fair as possible. We will be sad to say goodbye to the San Carlos Police Department, but are looking forward to the new opportunities and working relationships the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office will bring you, bring us. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you very, very much. Would anybody else like to speak on 3A, B, and C? Please, come on up. Thomas, welcome.
Thank you. Thomas Snutson. I'll be brief. A key element of the San Carlos mission statement is to provide high-quality services to foster a safe and healthy community in a fiscally sustainable manner. I encourage the council to continue to make tough decisions necessary to balance our budget and definitively bring our city into long-term fiscal sustainability. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, with that then, any other discussion on 3A or B, 3A, B, or C before we-
Mr. Royce. Or Mayor Royce. Yeah, I'll just really quickly, just to echo what was said by especially the ASME unit, I want to thank all the staff, our staff and the staff who are members who are affected by this proposal, but especially to the ASME unit. They came forth, they didn't fight us, we worked together, and it was a good relationship. And with all the employees, we're sorry that we're going to be seeing you go at this point, but thank you for working with us. You made it as seamless as possible, you didn't put up a fight, and I'm glad that we were able to meet you and find a way for this not to impact you as greatly as it would have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Mr. Groggott, looks like you're well, ready to speak there?
The, a couple of things I wanted to say. One is that it appeared, you know, when you opened things up to questions after Mr. Maltby, it might appear to people in the audience, or people who might be tuning in on TV, or however, a little bit amazed that we're not asking any questions, but, so I think it's fair to point out that so much of this material was discussed and worked out in closed session as it has to be. And, you know, when I was reading through this, I thought, okay, I read through it looking for points that were addressed where we'd already given direction. And, you know, the staff got it straight on with the things that we'd asked for, the things we'd negotiated on, and also, to be fair, for the things that these folks had asked for as well. So, most of the details, or all the details in some regards, had already been worked out, and that's why I think we don't have any questions. The other thing I wanted to say is that I've really struggled after getting this material and reading it and looking, you know, forward to this night of voting on this, because I voted against the original concept of doing this. And I had some other, I had reasons that I stated at the time for why I was opposed to it and things that I was concerned about. That said, as I read through this material, I thought, okay, just looking at it as a contract, can I vote yes or no on it? And does it meet, as I've stated, the criteria and the things we were looking for in closed session? Yes, it does. So, I only wanted to speak now to say that I will be voting in favor of these things, looking at them as a contract. Are they fair? Do they do the things we want them to do? It does not mean that I've changed my mind on the direction that we're taking and that I think it's the right direction necessarily. Not to be, I'm not trying to be critical of my, you know, fellow council members or staff by saying that, but folks know that I originally voted against this, and so I just wanted to offer that explanation.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Grisilli, any comments?
No, I don't have any comments. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the folks that came out tonight, and Heidi and all the folks of ASME and the folks with the P O A and everybody, everybody worked hard on this. It's not an easy decision. We are not the first, or should I say, we are the first, we will not be the last in this peninsula to do consolidations and things like this, but I think it was done in a professional manner, a give and take, a meet and confer. I think the council was listening to the folks to make sure it was a fair agreement that nobody would get hurt financially, per se, going to the new group. And I think that's, this councilman definitely wanted to make sure that was happening, and I think we all agree to that. And again, I just, it's a tough decision, as was mentioned earlier, but we're going to make the call, and then we're going from here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Ramad, anything now?
I'll reserve till 3D.
3D? Okay.
But, Mr. Mayor, we'll make a motion for adoption of resolution number, this is the first one, 3A.
Okay, so we're covering now 3A. Just to let everybody know what we're doing here.
Seventy-four.
Resolution of the City Council of the city of San Carlos adopting an agreement between the city of San Carlos and the American Federation of State/County Municipal Employees, ASME, A F L C I O Clerical and Technical and Midmanagement Units.
Second.
Okay. First and second. Any discussion before we vote? Okay. Call vote.
Councilmember Ramad.
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli.
Yes.
Councilmember Groggott.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Royce.
Yes.
Okay. Going to 3B.
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of resolution number 2010.
Seventy-five.
Resolution of the City Council of the city of San Carlos adopting the agreement between the city of San Carlos and the San Carlos Police Officers Association, P O A.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Royce, I just did think of another comment that I wanted to state.
Please.
Because there were articles in the paper about spending money to save money, and I don't think that was very well explained in any of the articles, so I'll take a stab at it. If you want to add to it, you know, feel welcome, but most of those costs were associated with things that we agreed to with the different groups, things like uniform, buying new uniforms and equipment that may be required, that's different, that we use versus what the county uses. And then, my understanding is, and what made me think of it on this item in particular is some of the buyout on vacation time or sick time and things like that, where some of that will be absorbed. My understanding of it is anyways, they'll be able to transfer that to the county, but what they can't transfer to the county, we will buy it out. And so, that's the one-time cost that we will bear in order to have this happen.
Thank you for explaining that. Okay, Groggott?
Councilmember Ramad.
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli.
Yes.
Councilmember Groggott.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Royce.
Yes.
3C, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of resolution number 2010 dash-
Seventy-six.
Resolution of the City Council of the city of San Carlos adopting the agreement between the city of San Carlos and the San Carlos Management and Confidential Employee Units.
Second.
Okay. Again, any discussion? Okay, Groggott?
Councilmember Ramad.
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli.
Yes.
Councilmember Groggott.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Royce.
Yes.
Okay. Now, we're 3D. Again, this is the consideration contracting a police services agreement and transfer agreement with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office and adoption of resolutions authorizing the city manager to execute these agreements. Mr. Maltby, report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Again, Jeff Maltby, administrative services director. Before we begin, I'd like to just take a moment and echo a few of the comments that our city manager, Mark Weiss, made a moment ago. I've been working on this project now for six months, and it's been a long process, been difficult at times, but we've had a lot of really wonderful people to work with, not only employees from this city, but employees from other agencies, other areas, in other disciplines, private sector. I'd like to just take a moment and thank a few of the people that we've worked with. Elisa Valdez, Jenna McAlpin, Heidi Morrison from the ASME group took a very collaborative approach with us on this issue. It was treated with decorum and respect and understanding, I think, in both directions, and I think that's reflected in the quality of the product that's before the council tonight. Sergeants Eric Stanley and Greg Miller, and officers Tom Marinos and Rick Chapoo, who took up the mantle of leadership when asked by their fellow P O A members after a rather difficult few months period. They came to the table with us, and again, were very collaboratively, raised at some very good issues, issues that we hadn't thought about, that helped not only strengthen the transfer agreement that's before you this evening, but the service agreement as well. We had just a whole host of input from the dedicated men and women of the San Carlos Police Department. They provided feedback, pros and cons, early on in the process, to Chief Greg Rothus that we used in our initial early discussions with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. Many of them came and talked to us or communicated with us some of their individual concerns and questions, and were able, again, to help strengthen the proposed contracts that are before you this evening. You know, a lot of times when you're a staff person and you're working on a special project, you can often reach out to other colleagues in the county and ask, you know, "How did, I heard you guys did this a few years ago. How did you do it? What does it look like?" Well, this is something where we're kind of blazing the trail in San Mateo County. There's not a lot of colleagues in our immediate area that we're on a first-name basis with that have broken this ground, and we were very fortunate in finding Ed Rogner from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Office to work with us and shepherd us through this process. I think he's been invaluable from the city's perspective, and I think the sheriff's office would echo those sentiments, that they found his expertise and insight to be invaluable in crafting a proposal that not only is going to meet our needs today, but hopefully, in the long run, help keep San Carlos safe and fiscally sustainable. I'd like to thank Sheriff Greg Monks for working with us, the many phone calls and meetings that we had. I'd like a very special thank you to the undersheriff, Carlos Bolanos, who's here tonight. As Carlos could attest, I would love to know how many telephone calls and emails he and I have exchanged over the last six weeks as we've tried to do this. I know his home phone number by heart. I think he probably knows mine. I can tell you, he goes to bed very late, as I do, based on the times that we're exchanging emails. He's been a true partner and a collaborator, and if there's any indication in the cooperation that we've had so far from the sheriff's office in crafting the contracts that are before you this evening is reflected in the service that they're going to provide this community, I can tell you, we are in for a great deal of service and commitment from the sheriff's office. They've had teams of people working with the city for weeks now to help smooth the transition and bring these contracts to the city council this evening. Our city attorney, Greg Rubens, has been a great advisor for all of us in terms of the legal issues associated with the contracts before you this evening. Our police chief, Greg Rothus, our commander, Mark Robbins, our H R manager, Janet Boe, Jack Hughes from L C W, who helped guide us through some of the tricky legal contract language related to the memorandums of understanding that we reached with the labor units, and Daryl Murray from I E D A as well. So, it took a team of many- So, it took a team of many individuals to craft a mutually beneficial contract that addresses the community's public safety needs, the employees' well-being, the city's financial issues, all in a sustainable, new way to ensure that the future generations of San Carlos can continue to live in a safe and livable community. And I believe the two items before you under item D do that this evening. There are two items, and I'm just going to describe them in just a little bit of detail so people can understand what the difference is between a service agreement and a transfer agreement. And to echo some of council member Grocott's comments earlier, you know, for those that are watching at home or joining, or watching this on the news later, we've had many meetings over the last six months with the council, public meetings, closed sessions on the labor issues with the council. So, none of this information is new to those of us that have gone through the whole process, but it may be new to many people that are just tuning in. The service agreement is the contract between the City of San Carlos and the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office for service. It talks about the service levels from higher level standpoint, in terms of the number of units that are going to be in patrol in San Carlos, how the detective bureau will function, and all of those sort of day-to-day operational issues that the city is purchasing from the county to provide law enforcement services to the community. Now, we have spent a lot of time talking about a lot of the individual issues with our employees. How is it going to affect our employees? How will our sergeants be maintaining their rank as sergeants? How will the pay structure work? All those things. And all of those individual issues or labor issues are addressed in what we call the transfer agreement. And we've used several documents to create these. We used some models from Southern California that were some of the most up-to-date models we could find from the LA area. We used some of the pre-existing contracts that the County of San Mateo currently has with Woodside and Patrol Valley to provide police services to those communities. And we sort of put those together, added in the custom elements that the council, the county, and our employees had all tentatively agreed on, and created the documents before you this evening. So, I'm going to take you back in time just a little bit to provide the perspective of the decisions before the council tonight. We've had in San Carlos 10 years of budget cuts. Our budget situation is certainly related to the economic downturn that everybody else's budget situations are related to as well. But ours existed prior to that, it's existed during that, and without significant change, it will continue to exist when the economy finally does rebound. So, it's no surprise that over the years, you know, we've reorganized the city, we've streamlined, we've eliminated a number of department head and management positions, we've cut our staff from 126 full-time employees to 107, and since the 107 number, you've done, that's the number, that's the pre-outsourcing number. So, the reduction that was made related to the outsourcing of our parks maintenance, it wouldn't be reflected fully in that number. In 2008, the city manager gave a presentation that he had entitled "The Tipping Point" and requested that a fiscal emergency be declared. Just after that, we had the 2008 financial collapse. In 2009, we had Measure U, which would have been a half-cent sales tax that went before voters. It was turned down. It had been one in sort of a decade-long series of tax measures that the voters in San Carlos had turned down. When that failed, we began our discussions with the council and the community on outsourcing of various functions, including police. We laid off a number of employees, about 5% of the city's workforce was laid off several months ago. And we began to make salary and benefit reductions for the rest of the full-time employees. Managers and confidential employees have recently agreed to waive a 2-and-3/4 raise that would have taken effect in July, and then further than waiving a future raise, also agreed to reduce 5% of their total compensation, salaries and benefits combined for the city. So, we do all that, and we're left with a $3.5 million budget deficit, which looks like that, that we're still trying to solve, and we continue in outsourcing. And one of the questions that I've often gotten, and I don't know if you've gotten similar questions from people in the community, is, you know, "Why did you pick police? You know, is there something wrong? What were the issues?" And I think this slide tries to explain that it really wasn't that we were picking police, it was that we were simply following where the city spends its money. And the city has its largest single commitment to a single service is police. And public safety, by far, is the largest category of spending that the city makes. So, if you're going to talk about making a significant fiscal restructuring for the city, you can't leave public safety out of that conversation. And I think the council understood that early on and understood that the conversation would be difficult at times, but that it needed to take place. And so, we began to pursue the outsourcing of police. We talked to a number of agencies in the county initially to determine if there were other agencies that had an interest in providing police services to the City of San Carlos. Ultimately, the City of Redwood City and the County of San Mateo were the only two agencies that provided a written commitment to the city. We went through a process where we did a review of those two proposals at the staff level, brought that to the city council for further vetting, brought it back to the city council, and the council made a determination that they would prefer to pursue a contract with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. We've been working on that now for a couple of months, and tonight are bringing it before Outsourcing's not a new concept, as we've talked with the council before. There are over 100 cities in California that currently contract for police services from their sheriff, county sheriff's office. These cities range in all sizes, some very, very small cities, others several times larger than San Carlos, up into the 100,000 population range. Each of these cities that we've looked at and that we've seen studies that have looked at, they've shown that they've saved considerable money by contracting with the Sheriff's Office for police services over comparable agencies within their own region who have their own in-house police department. The Yorba Linda study that we've talked about with the council before that was done by Ralph Anderson and Associates, this gives you an idea of how Yorba Linda compares, the costs of their contracting or police services compares with other cities that contract versus other in-house police departments. So, for San Carlos, this is how it looks. We spend $310 per capita roughly now for police services. Well, I mean, we're getting a heck of a deal. This is a safe community, we've got dedicated personnel, you can see that we're saving money over all our other neighbors for police services. It doesn't tell you the whole story. It doesn't tell you about how we've had to cut five sworn positions, we've virtually eliminated the traffic function at times in the city. The police departments made a number of cuts, and the feeling was that we'd reached a point where it was becoming difficult to sustain a police department if we were going to have to continue cutting. So, this is how we compare. I think we've done a good job with the existing model in terms of trying to save money. And this is how San Carlos compares to some of the more local cities who contract out. All of a sudden, we're spending a lot more than those contract cities. And this is, this we see echoed around the state. Here's some of the cities that we have talked about in the past, some very close to us, some a bit further away. Shows their population, how much money they're spending. The police department, the San Carlos Police Department's budget to provide last year's service level in this now new budget year would have been approximately $8.9 million. We've talked a lot at our meetings about the San Carlos Police Department, what a special department we think it is, was established in 1925. I think it's important that we honor the history of the department, the dedication not only of the folks working for it today, but remember that, you know, we've got a lot of folks out there that are retired or have since passed away that have been serving this community in our police department. And we've all tried to recognize that, I think, as we've gone through the process, and we'll be looking for ways in the future to honor the legacy of the San Carlos Police Department and make sure that while the name may change slightly and the uniform may be slightly different, that the spirit of the San Carlos Police Department will always live on in this facility and this community. The department currently consists of 23 police officers, six sergeants, two commanders, one of which is currently being filled on a part-time basis because of an employee moving on, and our chief, Greg Rothus. There are eight non-sworn employees in the department and five part-time employees. So, our goals in the process have been pretty much the same since the first time we talked and discussed this issue with the council back in March, to ensure that public safety remains at its current level, or possibly even enhanced levels at times, depending on how shifts work in patrol and whatnot, provide financially sustainable and operationally sustainable police services, so that next year, we're not back here talking about cutting more police officers again. I know that a number of council members at past meetings have expressed their frustration that they would like that conversation to end. They would like to have a budget come forward where they don't have to consider cutting police officers. And our goal with this contract is to make what maybe a couple of years ago seemed like a dream into a reality. To ensure that the San Carlos Police Department remains part of the fabric of the community so that the spirit lives on, as I was saying just a moment ago, that officers and field personnel have the necessary resources to protect the community and to make sure that they're safe while they go about that important job, to ensure that the compensation remains at industry standards. And that's an important thing for us all to remember, that, you know, these folks are doing a job. And, you know, we want to make sure that we continue to have the high-quality police officers that this community has had in the past and expects to continue in the future. And as our ability to pay has diminished over the years, you know, that becomes a worry not only for us, but the men and women that currently work for us. And we wanted to ensure, as we went through these contract discussions, that San Carlos could continue to control its police services, but through a contract model. So, the Sheriff's Office contract that's before you this evening, it talks about officer levels in patrol remaining at or higher than what they've been today, and they're guaranteed by contract. So, if somebody calls in sick, or somebody has a vacation, or, you know, whatever reason somebody can't be at work, the Sheriff's Office will guarantee that the same level of patrol that we're contracting for and paying for will always be provided. Now, that's something that we try to accomplish within the current model, but we're subject to the limitations of, you know, availability, callback, and a whole host of other functions that are of no fault of any individual or group of employees, but rather just subject to the limitations of the size of your own department. Response times won't change at all under the contract model. All the officers and sergeants that are serving in the patrol division will be based out of our current facility here in San Carlos and will be on patrol here. They certainly will continue to provide mutual aid to the county and Redwood City and Belmont and, you know, whoever calls for those services, but they will be here in our community providing those patrol services. Many of our current officers and sergeants will remain here in San Carlos, providing the same service that they've provided in the past with a different uniform on. The Sheriff's Office has recommended that our chief, Greg Rothus, serve as a captain of the San Carlos Police Bureau, effectively providing the same continuation of the leadership that we've had for the last five or six years under Chief Rothus. Available resources to the City of San Carlos in an emergency from the county would be far greater than we ourselves could provide during a crisis. All police department employees, as we've mentioned as part of some of the other items, will be offered a full-time job with the Sheriff's Office, and all our sergeants will retain their rank of sergeant as they go over. This isn't just being done because we like and appreciate our employees. This is also being done because it's in our interest to make sure that our quality employees are going into the Sheriff's Office, and the Sheriff's Office recognizes the value of our employees, the talent that they bring, the special training, the subject matter expertise that they have for our community. They're going to go into the Sheriff's Department, they're not all going to work in San Carlos, but they're going to pass that knowledge on, they're going to pass those skills on to the Sheriff's Office, thus enhancing the service, the overall service that the sheriff can provide us and the other communities that it serves. Sworn officers at the county receive a higher level of compensation than San Carlos currently offers its police officers. The county can provide additional resources for San Carlos community events at a separate low cost. It also has a very large volunteer police reserve program that could be utilized for community events. They offer a dare and school resource program, which could be restored to previous levels that have been cut in the past in San Carlos. We'll be providing an additional detective to the existing San Mateo Sheriff's Office Detective Bureau. Our cases won't be handled just by one detective, but by the entire Bureau of San Mateo County Detectives, which numbers, I believe it's approximately 45. Personnel assignments for the City of San Carlos will be reviewed with the city, and the city can request changes or adjustments be made, just as we could now in helping to provide continued control of how our police services are provided to this community. The Sheriff's Office has agreed to provide periodic reporting on police issues, crime issues related to the community, not only to the staff, but the council as well, and come and make presentations. They've agreed to conduct an annual customer service survey of the San Carlos community to help ensure that the services that they're providing are the services that the community values, and look for areas in which we can work together to improve those services. Just because we're contracting from the county doesn't mean that we're contracting the fact that we care about and are responsible for these police services. We still have a responsibility, and we still intend to be very much a part of the decisions that get made. And then, we come back around to the savings, the $3.5 million budget deficit, of which $2 million annually will be saved by contracting with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. So, should the council elect to proceed tonight with the service agreement and the transfer agreement? Some of the major next steps in the process will include the staff from the county and the city working to finalize the transfer of equipment such as vehicles, firearms, other miscellaneous police-type equipment, communications equipment such as radios, and technology equipment, computers, printers, all those types of things. There'll be a need for the city to purchase some additional equipment in some of those areas. In other areas, the county will simply be purchasing from the city that equipment to keep it in use here. A future replacement of these items will be built into the cost of the service agreement, so we won't be replacing this equipment ourselves, but are replacing it through the funding of the future replacement with the county. The county and the police department have formed some transition teams so far. The county and the police department have formed some transition teams so far, primarily right now their focus has been the equipment transfers that I just mentioned. But should the council elect to act this evening, those two agencies will be forming transition teams to address all the day-to-day issues, how they're going to handle briefings and property, and all those subject matter experts that we need and rely on their expertise for. The Board of Supervisors will be asked to take action on this in the month of September. And then, of course, we're targeting October 31, 2010 as the transfer date, and that just happens to be the first day of the county's payroll cycle, in the general timeframe that we were targeting. And the contract before you this evening would call for an initial five-year term. That's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Great presentation, by the way. I think your slides were on really key points, really excellent overview. With that, questions? Start, maybe, on the left, Mr. Grokot?
I have three things I wanted to ask questions about or see if they can be addressed. The first is the start date versus the annualization of the contract. It's a five-year contract. And my concern is that when, right now, this is starting in October because of, you know, the time taken to negotiate and so forth. But it seems to me it would be better for it to be a four-year and however many months contract to take us to our fiscal year, so it fits better with our own budgeting process. And I don't know if that adjustment could be made or not, or if the council would be interested in that adjustment, but I recognize that.
Did you pick up on something specific in the contract? Because that was my impression.
No, oh, is it?
Yeah.
Okay. If that, so it would actually, it's not exactly a five-year contract? It would terminate?
Mr. Mayor, the contract actually does read that at the end of the term, it's not quite five years, it's June 30, 2015.
Very good. Okay. So it's just the terms being used versus what the details are. Can you speak to, you had mentioned about the things that we can expect under this contract. We do strategic planning currently. At our strategic planning session, we usually have the chief there as department head. Now, I noticed when we did restructuring with building and planning and so forth, it used to be that the chief building official as department head would be at strategic planning. That person's no longer there because of the reorganization of the administrative staff, and so now we have the community development director only. I just use that as an example. So what are we to expect under this agreement? Would we still have somebody in that position coming to deal with ideas that we may have with public safety, and would those ideas be able to go anywhere?
I think that's an excellent point, and I would highly recommend that the captain from the sheriff's office be included in any future strategic planning that the council and the management team do, and in fact, be included in all areas that the management team has consulted in.
And to the second point of my question, then, things that we might come up with could be open for discussion with the sheriff's department?
Oh, I, yeah, I'm certain. We've had those discussions specifically. The sheriff's office is open into hearing whatever issues, concerns, ideas, priorities we have in the area of providing police services to San Carlos.
Okay.
And I know the undersheriff's here, and if he'd like to come up and say any more on that subject, he's welcome to, but we have talked about it specifically.
Okay, very good. And the last question I have is, when we were going through the other parts of this, dealing with personnel, there were estimates under each group, if you will, on what it may cost. It may cost less, it may cost a little bit more, is my understanding. But when we go through this agreement, Part D, it says that there could be costs involved, and it says, "Go to this attachment to see the issues discussed," but there is no estimate. And what I'm referring to is there's no estimate on things that are mentioned in here about equipment, where we may have to bear the burden of that. Do we have a handle on that, or as far as just a handle as an estimate?
Terms of a range?
Yeah.
I can give you a range right now, and we're still talking with the, I've just seen the, just in fact, this afternoon, I saw the very first draft, and I'm not even exactly sure what all the columns mean in the spreadsheet that was provided by the county, so we're going to have to go over that and do some work on it. I think it would be reasonable to assume at this point that, in all of those areas combined, that the city could expect to possibly pay maybe up to $50,000, to receiving possibly up to several hundred thousand dollars, depending on everything that gets included in timing. One big area where the city's going to have to make an additional contribution, sort of a larger area, is in the area of some firearms and equipment that needs to be bought on a one-time basis for the officers as they go over there, and then on a cyclical basis it'll be replaced by the county. The other large area where the county, the city would be expected to make an investment will be in radio equipment. The county has a different radio system, and so we'll need to, again, buy those radios on a one-time basis, and then in the future for the contract, there would be a replacement value built in. So that's kind of the range right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chrisol.
I have one question. Right now, if folks want to report a crime, or have a problem, or an issue, they just go out right down the hall. Is that going to continue?
The, as far as I understand it right now, the contract calls for an office assistant who would work at the existing counter so that the window that people can go to now will be there. Our patrol officers will be working in San Carlos, we're going to provide the same interview facilities that exist now.
I was looking more at the physical part of this building. There's going to be somebody there on regular hours, whatever hours there are. I know they're closed on Fridays, but it could be a similar type situation, that someone will be there to take reports or do whatever, if people come in with questions or whatever.
There will be somebody there. It is important to note, however, that there will be services that are currently provided here that will be provided at a Redwood City, such as the records function.
Right, I understand that. But if somebody come, there's going to be a human being here.
There will be a human being here to help.
Thanks, Jeff.
Mr. Klein, any questions?
Yeah, just one question, Mr. Maltin. In this report, there's a letter from the sheriff's office saying that they wish to, it's their intention to hire our current police chief as our captain. So essentially, we would remain our chief, but he gets a different title. How does that process work? Because I'm reading that in the future, our captain will be chosen in conjunction with the sheriff by our city manager. So what is the timeline on that? Is it instantaneous, or does our city manager have to go and meet with the sheriff and make it all formal for moving forward with who our captain will be?
For this specific? Well, I think, yeah, that needs to happen. The city manager, per the existing proposal, the contract before you, could accept the sheriff's recommendation that Chief Greg Rothus be hired by the county, and should the city manager make that recommendation, it would proceed along the same timeline as October 31, and the chief would be subject to all the same employment requirements that the county has placed on all our other employees.
But we would know well before Halloween who our captain is going to be, correct?
Yes, we would.
Okay. That's the only question I had.
Mr. Mott?
Yeah. So Jeff, of course, I'm interested, as has been spoken before in the past, about performance measures. I see we have an annual customer survey, which I'm really excited about. Also, with the transition, especially the first year, you know, there will be many things that go right, there'll be a few things that don't go right, and we need to react to those. I'm very interested in how, what kind of reporting, and, you know, how do we let the public know how we're doing during this transition over the first year or two? What kind of plans do we have for reporting?
Okay. I'm going to ask our undersheriff, Carlos Polanos, if he could come up here and possibly talk a little bit about that. And maybe if you'd like any sort of existing San Carlos-specific information, then Mark Robbins, I think we talked a little bit earlier about that.
Just a general response, I think. Great. Thank you, welcome. Welcome back.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Carlos Polanos, undersheriff of San Mateo County. Our plans for reporting on activities that occur in the community of San Carlos are very similar to the reports that you currently get. We would ask our bureau captain to continue to report those figures to the council, to the city management staff, and to the community. And on top of that, we're also looking at, we're in the process right now redesigning our website, and one of the features that we intend to implement in that website is a San Carlos link where residents, or really anyone, can go to that link and get that information online. So we are, we've heard loud and clear what the wishes of the council are in the community and are working towards that.
Great. Okay. With my only input on that in transition, I also, and council, I'm sure, wants to hear about what's not going right and what we're doing, you know, to fix it, too. We want a true response and really keeping track of our performance with the sheriff.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I might add just one thing on that subject. It is our intention, the staff's intention, that we make periodic reports to the city council on the transition process leading up to October. You know, I think based on your comment, it's probably a good idea that we continue to make those reports periodically, even after the October 31, about some of the issues that have come up.
Superb. Okay. So with that, I'd like to open it up. Public comment, if anybody would like to speak on 3D. I'd like to start off with Nancy Parker, and anybody else that would like to speak on 3D, again, welcome, come on up. Hi, Nancy, welcome.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to address you. I am a local resident in San Carlos, long time. I moved here for two reasons: great schools and a great public safety record in the community. I am here not to speak against the San Mateo Sheriff's Office. I am here to speak on behalf of the fact that I, along with many of my neighbors, who could not be here since this is a long weekend, support our local San Carlos Police Department. We support the commanders, the chief, the lieutenants, the sergeants. We're a small community, and we were built on being family. So in light of the fact that it sounds like the resolution is moving forward, and probably we're going along the lines of adopting it tonight, I just wanted to say that I personally, as a community member, want to see the right thing done for our men and women who have served our community. So hopefully, we are moving forward with looking at the contracts to carefully review the fact that the commander stays the commander in San Carlos, the chief stays as the chief in San Carlos, so on and so forth. In addition, that we recognize these individuals for their service here. So I just wanted it to be on record that many, many of us understand that there's a need to balance the budget and costs that are associated, but we do not support the continued reduction in public service and local public service, which has been represented very well by the San Carlos Police Department. So I want to acknowledge that they've done a fabulous job, and personally say that I would like them to remain on.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nancy. Pat Bell?
I too, as you very well know, support our San Carlos police officers and administrative And I assume that they're going to get a good deal out of this. I didn't read every word, but I read the part about the unsworn employees, and that looks pretty good. I want to make sure that when In-N-Out is finished, we can hire another officer or two for In-N-Out, because my neighbors and I are going to call every--
So Pat, this is not about In-N-Out?
I want to, I'm talking about staffing. I want staffing that is appropriate to what's going on in town at the time.
Pat, we're not covering staffing of In-N-Out Burger at the table.
I'm talking about police staffing, if you don't mind.
Okay, but it's--
I'm asking--
It's not related, in my opinion, but please continue.
I am asking that the staffing not remain as it is today, but increase as needed to provide the same level of service. Public safety is very important to me, as the previous speaker said, and I don't want that to be lost, that we want public safety. If that saves money, fine. If it doesn't, fine. What we want is the service. And when more service is required, as it will be as all this development goes on on the east side, we're going to have to increase the police staffing. There's more than one project coming along that's going to bring a lot of new people into San Carlos, and you cannot ask the sheriff to give us the same level of service we have now with the same number of people, because you can't do it. So having, saying that we're going to, the staffing's going to remain the same is actually bad news. It's very scary to think of a city with, I don't know, a thousand more residents and hundreds and hundreds more visitors every single day who come here to work, or to eat, or whatever they're going to do, and we're going to have the same police staff that we have now. Well, you can't do it.
Great. Thank you very much, Pat. Pat, anybody else? Please. Ken Castle, and then Thomas, you're next.
Ken Castle, White Oaks Neighborhood Watch. The first thing I wanted to say, I noticed that the transition would be made effective on October 31, which is Halloween, and I thought you guys didn't have a sense of humor. How spooky is that? The thing that I think needs to be understood by all parties as we wrap up these negotiations, and I'm happy that the employees of the department are being taken care of and that they have been accommodated, this is a bitter pill for the community to swallow. Let's not sugarcoat this. This is giving up an 85-year tradition, an independent police department that has excelled in being not only one of the best departments in the state, but in the country in terms of its crime clearance. And I don't think this department and these people have been given enough credit for that. I'd like to know a year from now if those clearance rates that hovered around 70% for major crimes, if those rates remain the same. Which brings me to the question of, it's not just what is voted on and the tenets of the contract and the bodies, it's a number of things. It's the people that are here, it's, are we going to remain with the core of officers that know this city and commanders? If that's so, that's great. I think Chief Rothus is, by being in charge, will be a real asset in this process. I have every confidence that the sheriff's department is very professional. They're going to have to reach out to the community quite a bit, I think, to get our feedback. So it's not about just bodies, it's having the right bodies. The second thing is, going forward, the question is, what yardstick do we use to measure performance? And I think that it needs to be a collective issue. I think it needs to be involving the community and the stakeholders in the community. I think there need to be regular meetings. I think there needs to be some kind of an oversight group made up of citizens and chamber people and school people and others that have interests, maybe some outside law enforcement people. And I think that if we have that kind of input, and the sheriff is willing to listen, and the city is willing to listen, then we could have a very effective program. But it's not proven yet, this is not a business model that is typical of the sheriff's department. Portola and Woodside are not San Carlos, they're very different communities, so there's really no similar comparison in terms of the type of community. So this is a different critter, and I hope that everybody remains open-minded. I'm glad that we're getting an organization that has more resources, we're reinstalling some programs, and we're keeping our people. But let's do something to measure this, and let's make it tangible, and let's get the community involved. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ken. Thomas?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm in support of the proposed outsourcing of city police services to the sheriff of San Mateo County, in no small part because the proposal before you guarantees full-time employment for all of our hard-working sworn officers while helping us meet our fiscal objectives. There was one component that I was not clear on, and that was whether or not these officers would have guaranteed employment-- would have guaranteed employment beyond the period of one year. I believe I read a clause somewhere in these documents that stated that the guarantee was only for one year, so I'm bringing that up as a question. Thank you.
Yes, great, thank you.
Mr. Malby, want to answer that question?
There wouldn't be a commitment from the sheriff's office to guarantee employment beyond one year from layoffs. However, what our employees would have are all the same job protections and rights of employment that are provided by the federal government, the state government, and all the policy practices and procedures of San Mateo County. In reality, the county sheriff's office is such a larger function than the city that our employees are a rather small percentage of that overall workforce. And so it's anticipated that as a year from now, our employees, you know, will move up in terms of seniority and new employees will be hired behind them by the county for a whole, by the sheriff's office, for a whole variety of functions. And it's my understanding from the sheriff's office that they understand this issue, they respect our employees, enough so that they've actually continued to hold open vacant positions that they need to fill even after our employees come over, so that they will be hiring some new employees behind our employees and elevating them a little bit on the seniority list.
Great, thank you.
Through the chair. I have a follow-up question on that. I understand the concern of the speaker. What guarantee, if we weren't doing this, these same employees, what guarantee would they have of future employment with the City of San Carlos Police Department?
They would have the protections of federal state law as well as the personnel policies and procedures of the City of San Carlos, which would talk about their seniority and the order of layoffs and those kinds of things, very similar to other public entities and many private entities as well. But they have no guarantee of employment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on this topic? Welcome to do so. Okay, so with that, I'd like to get some discussion going here among council. Start, can I start on my right, Mr. Klein? You want to start off?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. And I'll keep my comments fairly short since I think we all know which way I'm leaning. You know, I don't, I have lost some sleep over this because while it may make complete sense on paper, we are shutting down an 85-year-old police department. This police department has existed for as long as this town, this police department has served this town very well, and it's run, as we've been shown, very efficiently. Unfortunately, public safety is incredibly expensive and gets more expensive every year no matter what you try. Health costs go up, salaries go up, our police officers are the lowest paid in the county. And I don't believe in any way that they are the lowest-functioning police officers in the county, I would like to say they're the best, but they get paid the least. And how long can we really keep that going? How long can we continue to tell our police officers, "You're the best, but we just can't afford to pay you the best"? And my decision really came down to two things. One was the agreements that were seen before us, how we can keep staffing constant for now and possibly upgrade it as time goes on in the contract. But also, what would this mean for your average citizen? What would this mean for the seniors? What would this mean for the parents? What would this mean for the children? And I thought of two scenarios. One scenario is that we do this, that we contract out our police department. What does that mean for your average citizen? And I imagine the day after we, the day after the transfer takes place, your average citizen's not going to notice. Your average citizen's going to see the same faces, they're going to see the same cars, they're going to still feel safe in this community, they're still going to be policed by a very effective police department, by people who do care about this community. On the other hand, if we don't do this, how would this affect your average citizens? And I imagine your citizens, the quality of life would go down very rapidly in this town. We are suddenly closing parks, we are closing centers, we are having more crime due to that, and we can't afford to hire any more police officers, and our police officers are still the lowest paid in the county. When you look at it that way, it makes it pretty simple. I think we have to go to a regional model. I know people out there would like to see a JPA between municipalities, but in no way am I a fan of JPAs. I believe going to the sheriff is a tried and true method. Yeah, it's not tried and true in San Mateo County, we only have two cities who are with the sheriff, and they've been with the sheriff since the beginning, but it's tried and true throughout the state. It was said today that over 100 cities contract out with the sheriff's department. Well, there's only about 400-plus cities in the state of California, I believe, so that's about one-fifth of the cities in the state of California currently are patrolled by the sheriff's department. And I don't think you could point to them and say they're any less safe because they have the sheriff there. Cupertino, Saratoga, Woodside, Portola Valley, all these cities feel very safe. I would be very surprised if you went to Woodside and asked a resident there, "Do you feel unsafe in your town"? I'm pretty sure they'll tell you they feel very safe in their town. So it just comes to, we have to go to a new model in order to guarantee public safety, in order to make sure our citizens are safe and they still have quality of life in this town, especially during this recession. We have to go to a different model. We are going to be joining a policing agency that is very large, that has multiple resources, that we do not have to build from the ground up, that has existed for as long as the county. County's been around longer than San Carlos has. The sheriff has been here, he's seen this county grow, the department has seen this county grow, and they have been very effective at policing it. So I will be voting in favor of both of these agreements. I do understand that this, this is going to be tough emotionally for the city, but I believe when it comes down to the operating of the police force, your average citizen won't notice and will be better served by being able to maintain policing and maintain our quality of life at the same time.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Ahmad?
Mr. Mayor, I spent a good chunk of the afternoon going through my notes. A lot of folks see me hacking away on a laptop, and if you come up and give a public comment, chances are I've written it down and want to review it. The comments we have had have ranged from really heartfelt emotion to, one that I had to write down from Mike DeTata, who actually quoted Dostoevsky to us. We have a spectacular city. It is well-educated, they understand what city services go through, and they also understand that we have tough choices to make. Mr. Malby made a statement that we're sort of pioneers in this venture within San Mateo County. One of my favorite statements is, you can always spot the pioneers because they have arrows in their backs. Couple of comments that have come through as we started to move forward here. A lot of this came a result of Measure U. There was a comment that it was a poorly-run campaign. One thing that we should know is that it wasn't a city campaign. The city decided to put the measure in front of the people, but it was a group of volunteers who had to push for Measure U. If those volunteers did not do the job, that's, that's what it was. We're in this position because the recession has taken almost a million dollars out of our pocketbook and that has resulted in our deficit. NPDES stormwater fees have gone up almost a million bucks. Not dealing with this problem meant that we were digging our hole deeper by $10,000 a day. We had to take action and we had to do it quickly. So what did we do? Mr. Malby has already alluded to some of these things, but we did do layoffs. We outsourced our payroll services. We froze our contribution to the fire department. I think every member of the youth advisory council and most of the members of the, most of the folks who go to the Adult Community Center came out and talked about what the quality of life would be if we started to restrict those programs. We did not close parks, but we outsourced parks maintenance. Many people, I'm looking, I know that Mr. Randall speaks on this point frequently and Mr. Young has done this too, called for management to take cuts. They have. Now, one of the things that we have done on council, we follow the fair labor practices when it comes to negotiating with our employees. We don't conduct our negotiations in the press, so we're not doing this to gain headlines, but we're doing this to make certain that the employees and the city are following the law. But the sentiment of, "We want management to take cuts" has been done. There have been significant concerns about service levels. What is going to happen? One speaker, I love the quote, says, "This deal has whiskers." Well, how do you start to figure out what's going underneath the hood? I spent some time with Cupertino Mayor Chris Wong. They've been a contract city with the sheriff, they're bigger than us. I was like, "How does it work? What works well? How are you saving money when your neighbor Los Gatos isn't"? Couple of things happened. They said that their administrative costs were slashed, overtime costs basically ended. They also mentioned that they had their pick of duty officers and that they also had a number of officers who wanted to patrol in their city. I think San Carlos will be the same. We're not making this decision because of anything that the San Carlos Police Department has done wrong. On the contrary, they are a tremendous group of professionals. We don't do this because we like this, we do this because it is the prudent thing to do to keep our city solvent. People have asked, "Where do we save money?", and it's in two major areas. Number one, our administrative costs are slashed. And two, one of the biggest drivers in our safety budget was overtime. We have now really capped it. We've tried to do these negotiations in good faith so that nobody loses a job. It's a tough market out there. We really don't want people to be unemployed. Furthermore, I believe that our enforcement capabilities are greater. We get reinstatement of programs that we had to cut last year, and we have better traffic enforcement after this is done. Now, one common theme that people have said throughout the hearings was, "We want to do pension reform." It's not specifically on the agenda, but I agree with you. Pensions are something we need to look at, and we will be. Lastly, let me acknowledge a couple of folks. If I leave people out, please forgive me, but I want to point, pull out a few folks in particular. San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, thank you for all your help, it's been tremendous. I'd like to acknowledge the City of Redwood City. They put together a tremendous proposal, they put a lot of effort in trying to see what a regional model can, can work with. Mayor Jeff Ira is a friend, I want to acknowledge him. Staff has done an amazing job. Let me call out Jeff Malby for wearing a helmet and a mouthpiece a lot of times. Chief Rothus has provided steady leadership throughout what has been a very tough storm. The Police Officers Association, I do want to say that as of late, we have been able to work together in a cooperative fashion. It has been good to work with you, and I think we have come together to a, to a point where everybody can feel good about what is about to transpire. And I do want to lastly state to the APSME unit, I truly appreciate and thank you for your spirit of cooperation. Thank you. It has been a tough ride and I appreciate what you did coming to the table and working with us. Again, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of these things, again, not because I like it, but because it's prudent and because it is the right thing to ensure the solvency of our city.
Gentlemen, who wants to go next?
I pretty much said my piece before we, you know, on the, on the first item. I don't have a lot to add to it. This is not my idea. But again, you know, I read through this and I'm fine with the terms of the, the contract and it matches what we discussed in closed session. But in no way is this my project, and I don't take leadership on this, but I will vote on it.
Thank you.
I made comments earlier. This is, this is the 21st century, this is a recession, this is unprecedented. As I said before, we are blazing new, as Mr. Ahmad said, we're pioneers. I don't, I don't want an arrow in my back, I'm sorry, I'm not going there. But this is tough, but this is only, like I said, we're not, we're the first, but we're not the last, and this isn't going to be the, the last decision we're going to have to make in public safety or in our budget process for the next two years. Just because we solved our budget issue tonight, and it's not going to fix everything for the rest of the time. So we're up here, we're doing things that we think are right for the citizens with, with the, with the understanding that we want a strong public safety, which I believe we're going to get from, from the sheriff's department, and it's just, it's, it's a difficult call. None of us want to make it, we'd rather we didn't, but we're going to make it because this is why we got elected, to make these decisions. And I've said my piece before, thank everybody that's worked on this. Mr. Mayor, after your comments, I'm willing to make the motion.
Great, thank you.
So I always like to look back and talk about where we've been. It's been very evident, if you go back five years or even up to the dot-com bust of 2,000, our safety expense has grown significantly more than our revenues that we bring in. You saw a slide there with police at 21%, fire at 30%, our revenues are very flat and not sustainable to be able to afford an overall safety ratio that started when I joined council just a few years ago at 52% to very quickly jump to a burn rate of 60%. And that got our attention, it got all of city council's attention and staff's attention to start doing something about it. So that's the history. When this started, there were a few early comments that kind of got my attention. One person said, "Don't mess with my safety." So tonight and in the last six to nine months, we've been messing with safety. It's a big number. Police costs are growing about 6% now over the last couple of years. It's not sustainable, so we're, we're taking action, is the term I would use, we're not messing with it, but we're trying to make some good decisions to retain level of service, retain San Carlos as a super place to live, a super safe area, but to do it within an affordable area so that we don't go broke five or 10 years from, from now. Another person said, "Don't spend $7 million when we spend $9 million, it's not going to be as good." Well, I'll leave you with that thought, but never in a competitive market do you ever realize that someone can come out with a service level or a product that's half the cost that has five times the capability? It happens every day, and we in government are getting better at a competitive world where we're looking at different business models, a way to still provide exceptional service, and I believe this will be exceptional service for $2 million less. That's, that's more than $5,000 a day less that it's going to cost us for a very exceptional Of course, the two things that I looked at as city council is level of service. I think you could look at the slides, you could look at the contract, the level of service, the response rates, the number of officers, and then there's all the add-ons of traffic patrol and DARE and access to drugs and gang-related resources and so forth. I'll guarantee that, that it's as good, and I predict that it'll be better. And you have to look at better than not only where we are now, but where we're going. That 21% increase in police costs included layoffs every year. Our resources are kept going down, and they would continue to go down. And so when, when you measure to, to where we are now or where we would be in a few years, you could see the significance of level of service. And of course, the other really important thing, and we owe it to, to all of our staff and our sworn officers, is what a, what a safe area San Carlos is. There's metrics out there, we've gotten reports from our chief, we compare to other cities, but you know that you could walk down any neighborhood street, any alley off of Laurel at any time in the morning and feel safe in, in our town. And these officers and these employees will have jobs. At a monthly dinner last Friday with other mayors, City of Millbrae has two openings for police officers. They have 300 applicants. So it emphasizes the fact in this econ- So it emphasizes the fact, in this economy, that we could provide employment, actually working in San Carlos, not seniority, but everything else of pay, benefits, and pension for our long-term, short-term employees, to all of our staff in the police department. And that, I think, is a big win when you're up here talking about making a change and you're taking care of your people. What we, of course, need to realize is we put these employees through a lot of heck. There were times when they didn't know they had jobs. They don't know maybe some of the jobs they're going to be doing in the next five years. They'll have opportunity, but there's change going on. And so with that, I could say, sorry for the tension, sorry for, you know, what we've created here. We've created change, but generally with change, it ends up making you a little better, a little stronger as you get through that, and we're here to support you through this change. But I do want to recognize there is change for every employee because they will no longer show up in City Hall here to work for the City of San Carlos Police Department. Two other quick thoughts is, a lot of people ask me a question about local knowledge. We'll lose our local knowledge. And of course, my response to that is, having spent about a month and a half ago, about a half-day down at the sheriff's office, I didn't know much about them, but I learned a lot. But one thing that came out that wouldn't normally have come out in a visit like this and a touring, is that these officers that work for the sheriffs, many of them have worked for other cities. Some of them have only worked for the sheriff, but they are exposed to the court system. They're exposed to the jail. They're exposed to a lot of county organizations that take care of our youth and our seniors and our mentally ill people, and they have a whole range of experience that they're going to be now walking down Laurel Street or down in our industrial park, working with a San Carlos police officer who has the local knowledge. So I really see this team, this partnership of skill sets, of sharing those skill sets, and opportunity for our employees to get different skill sets and do different jobs as a tremendous benefit to provide the safety services that we actually need. And my last thought is, I covered it a little bit already, transition is so key. We will have our current police chief as captain. He will physically sit here. His job is to make this work. His job is to react to the bumps that we see over this first year. And I will also say that if there are any concerns of any citizen or any business in San Carlos, call me, call our police chief. We will react immediately during this transition period to continue to keep San Carlos a great place to live because it's so safe here. So with that, as you could tell, I'm pretty excited about this. With that, any other thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, if I could, to make a motion on Resolution Number?
Seventy-eight, seventy-seven, seventy-eight.
Make them separately, Mr. Rubens.
They should be made separately.
Right. Seventy-seven, 2010-77, Resolution of the City of San Carlos Approving a Contract with the San Mateo County Sheriff to Provide Police Services in the City of San Carlos and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute. I think there should be more words, "Such Contract," but I'll just read that there.
Second. Second. Okay. Any discussion, more discussion this before we go? Okay, real call.
Councilmember Maud?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2010-78, Resolution of the City Council of San Carlos Approving a Transfer Agreement with the San Mateo County Regarding Police Services in the City of San Carlos and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Such Contract.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Real call, please.
Councilmember Maud?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes.
Sorry. Okay. With that, the meeting will not be closed. There'll be an adjournment to closed sessions. Mr. Rubens, City Attorney, would you like to report on that?
The report will come after. We don't need to make any special announcements, just adjourn to the closed session that's put on the agenda.
Okay. And I'd recommend maybe we take about a five-minute recess before we reconvene for a closed session. Great, thank you.